Hi guys, welcome back to my channel. My name is Dee and welcome to Dee's Life Vlog. Hi, welcome back. Hi guys, how are we doing? Good morning, good afternoon, really it's almost one o'clock. That's good. Good morning, welcome to the vlog. Today's gonna be actually be a study vlog. It's currently almost one o'clock. It's 12:50. I'm about to eat some lunch and we're gonna get started on planning my day. I've actually done a lot today and was looking today yesterday. Went shopping yesterday. And today I got up, put away some clothes, cleaned the kitchen. Just got the trash. Especially had a pretty productive morning. This is the first time eating anything, but I've had a pretty productive morning this morning. Mm-hmm, that's good soup. And I am going to just chillax and work on some homework today. I have a good amount of homework to do and a lot of stuff period to do, so we'll go over that when I go to plan it out. But right now, I'm about to eat my tomato soup, eat my cheese bagel and drink my pumpkin spice protein coffee, which I'm gonna leave the own brand link down below. Also, do you like my new bonnet? I got it in the shopping vlog, which should already be up on my channel. Actually about to start editing it today, so I can schedule it to go up on Wednesday and this will go up on Sunday. So, I've got lots to do. The first, breakfast. Okay, hello. I have returned. I have eaten my breakfast. I've put away the rest of my soup. Um, I heated up my coffee because um, she was a little cold after just eating soup. Nice warm soup. However, it is now time to make the Sunday to do. If you are confused as to why I do this, I do this all the time. Um, which is right my to-do list on my mirror so I can see it, especially when I'm at home all day. I try and just like put it up to my mirror because it makes it look like easier. So, there are a few things to do today. Main thing at the top of the list is going to be the fact that I'm a paper good. So, I have a language project. Sorry, can't swell, smell. That's due today. So, this is at the top of the list because it's due today, tonight, ten. Right underneath that, I have a psych quiz. That is also due tonight, ten nineteen. Okay, those things do need to get done. Uh, two random things on the list as well is um, I need to edit this week's vlog. Which is not due, today is the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, ten twenty-two, which is the twenty-second, which is Wednesday. But also, I have two things. Two. Two things of my language, no, structure. No, sounds. Of human language. I just use HL for human language because I have two human language classes, classes. Actually, both of my classes, all four of my classes are the exact same thing, just reiterate it. I have structures of human language and sounds of human language. And then I also have uh, applied behaviors and the um, applied behaviors of human, of behavior. I have applied behaviors. What is it? What is that class called? It's something, it's applied something. It's one that's applied and then one that's just the theory. So, it's the same like applied behaviors class, but one is the actual application, the other is just the introduction into it. But you can take the classes together, so my classes are just reiterating themselves over and over again, but both of those are done. But that's not due until the twenty-first. And then I also have a quiz in this class, which means I do need to go over the study guide. But the quiz isn't until the twenty-fourth. So, that's something that's on the back burner, but if I have time, I'll do it. Another thing, my friend reminded me this of this morning, which is I need to set up my Gator insurance card. So, I have insurance through my school because I just chose that. I'm too old to be on my mother's insurance because I'm now almost, I turned twenty-six at the end of last year. I turned twenty-six in about a month or so, month-ish or so. Um, so I'm no longer on my mother's insurance, so I said I have college insurance. So, I just had get insurance through Shands Hospital. So, I do need to set up some of my insurance cards so I can go to the doctor, which I just do this every semester. I just get it again every semester, so it's nothing for me personally. I just pay out of pocket. And then, of course, something else along with this, I need to do my FASPA. Personally, I do need to do my FASPA. That is something that is also on my list. So, this is kind of what the list is. Other stuff that's gonna get done either way is put my sheets back on my bed. And wipe down all surfaces because these are just cleaning things. Wipe surfaces. And then last thing on the list along with things that are just gonna be, don't say it's just full clothes. I'm currently in process of washing clothes, so I have most of my clothes washed already and I have all of them put away. However, I have stuff that's currently in the dryer. Both my blankets and my sheets on my bed are in currently in like the washing machine, so those are gonna get cleaned next and then I'll put those away and put those away during like my twenty-minute break. So, this is the list of things that need to be done today. It is currently like one-ten, one-fifteen-ish. Ooh, speaking of things that can go here. Appointment. With, not my advisor, appointment at I have to make an appointment at the library to go take my quiz. Not this week, the week after next. So, that's fun. First things first though, I wanna wipe down my desk because she's a little groovy. Let's put it up. Okay, really quickly. To really give into the fall vibes, I have a wax mount currently. As you can see, it's actually really flippin' light. However, it's supposed to be this dark, which means I have worked her down. So, I'm just gonna add this to it. On it, I just add one, another one to it, another little puck to it. Let me just pop her out first, goodness. And I wanna turn on this wax mount. It's like pumpkin scented. It's from the brand uh, Eleventh Hour Candle Co. It's like a local brand here in Gainesville. And I got the Sweet Vanilla Whip. It's vanilla pumpkin marshmallow. Which is really, it's really nice. I also have these that I got from a company called One Oh Eight Vine. These are also local to Gainesville. I have like some witchy ones and I have like the apple pumpkin spice one. I bought two. There's one pumpkin spice is already in here. I think this is, this one is sleep. I can tell this is sleep. I felt that immediately as I pulled it out. Here's the pumpkin spice one, like so I can just add this one on there too. But yeah. So, I have a bunch of wax melts that I keep accumulating. I need to find some more wax melt brands or just go shopping for some more. Um, the girl that I got those ones, these ones from, she has been a pop-up, but I don't have time to go. Me and my friend are trying to go to the, one of the uh, what's that place called? Farmer's markets here in Gainesville. It's just that it only happens early Saturday morning. So, it's a little hard to, you know, get into. There are humans outside. So, I'm gonna have my headphones in, honestly, and we'll figure out what I wanna work on first. Because it's currently like what, one-twenty-two, it's like almost one-thirty. And I wanna start at two o'clock on the dot for like all of my like school stuff, so I may work on the editing for the build video first. Also, I'm going to be using new headphones because my friend got me new friend, new headphones. I have been using the same Raycon headphones for about five years now and they finally have given out. Well, they're still workable, they still work. However, they no longer stay charged in the case and they don't stay charged for long. But I've also had these for five years. So, I would like to say Raycons killed it, but these are now dead. Shouts out to Raycon because I killed your headphones. Uh, my apologies, but I do that to all electronics. However, I do have my new ones. These are from the brand Soundcore. My friend is a electronics nerd and got me them because I mentioned that hey, I need new headphones and I was like, we were having a conversation about headphones because I need new ones. However, I was confused on to what I should get because I don't get over the, I don't get over the ear headphones because I usually wear my hair in Afro, so there's no point in me trying to finagle that around the fro on a regular basis. So, I wear earbuds. However, I need earbuds that have like the sizing caps on the ends because I have really tiny ear holes. Um, and I need something that's gonna stay in my ear because I live my life with headphones in. So, they recommended these and so I got these. Thank you to them. So, I am gonna put my headphones in and they work really well. I'm gonna leave these linked down below and I'm also gonna leave Raycon, the brand, just linked down below as well as someone who has officially let go of their headphones. Um, and so you can, if you need new headphones or if you would look for new headphones, something definitely you should look at. So, I'll leave that link down below. Let's get into it. Like I said, I'm gonna start off by beginning on editing this week's video. Yeah, maybe the best option. Okay, I'm about to start uh, on the first fifty minutes. Okay, I'm already tired. I'm already over. I don't even wanna do this anymore. However, I don't have a choice. I now have to do this. So, I'm gonna have my headphones in. I'm about to start playing. I think I'm just gonna stick to music for now. Um, I finished, I worked on the vid. So, here's this, here's how this is gonna work. Every fifty minutes, I'm going to do a task. For fifty minutes straight, I'm going to do a task. Guys, I'm going to be a part of my paper, the quiz, it doesn't matter. Fifty minutes straight, I'm going to do a task. Then I shall take a twenty-minute break and do another fifty minutes for a next task. And we're just going to switch out each task until I get something done, send that part off and then I'll start on another task within that fifty minutes. So, for fifty minutes straight, I have to stay focused on a singular task. So, I've done most of editing of that video. That video is mostly edited. It needs music, graphics, and then it can be downloaded, uploaded, and then a thumbnail. Almost done. Next, we're gonna get started on my paper. It is a language paper. I have to, I'm currently going over Cherokee. I have both of my Cherokee books available to me. We're gonna get started on that. We're gonna do that for fifty minutes straight. Take a twenty-minute break and then I'll figure out which one I wanna do next. I have my water next to me. I do have the shit, however. Uh, that's mainly because I am anxious now. I'm going to begin the fifty-minute start watch, the fifty-minute timer right now because it has just hit two o'clock. So, let's begin. Start. Okay, first fifty minutes is up. I've gotten started on my Cherokee paper already. I'm actually pretty, not super duper far into it, but I've done most of the research and I've pulled up most of the sources I need. Um, however, it's time to switch subject. So, we have a twenty-minute break before three-ten and then we'll switch over to something else. I think I'm gonna go straight from my papers into doing my quiz for uh, I'm gonna go straight to doing my quiz for my psych class so I can get that done and turn it in. I finished my coffee and I switched to water. And I have to drink all of this because this is like full before I can get anything else to drink. So, that's fun. I also have put on a sweatshirt because I am cold perpetually, non-stop. So, that's a personal thing. Um, I have my socks on. Sockies are on, my fluffy socks. I'm waiting for my blanket to get out of the dryer, warm, so I can just duh. And I will take this back off, however, I'll keep the socks on. Um, I also feel like it's snack time. And I have some frosted cookies. Let's go. Because even like my favorite cookies to ever eat are like the soft cakey cookies and I've been craving these cookies for weeks, so I'm going to have them. You might go check on my blankets just to see how they're doing in the dryer. Because I popped up at some point to go check on them and they were still kinda damp, so I just turned it back on. Yeah. Like I said, we're about to switch gears to psych quiz, so I can get that over with. Mmm. Why didn't you remind me? Once I finish my psych quiz, I'm gonna work on my behavior plan paper for the same psych class. I'm gonna open my mirror. I love a soft cookie. I don't know how a lot of people like them, but they're one of my favorites. This is my second box. In like a two-week time span. Actually, one week, because I got a box on Monday, ate through it and then my friend, I told her, I was like, I'm still craving cookies even though I finished my box. She was like, I'll buy you some. I was like, period, ate down. Because she currently works out of Publix. And so she just brings home shit sometimes. Oh. More cookies for me. Okay. I've got like fifteen minutes left in my break, so I'm about to go check my blankets, see if it's like warm, so just place the warm blanket over me and then move around my other clothes. Mmm, hopefully. Okay, blankets were dry, so I've gotten myself a nice warm blanket. I put my other stuff in the dryer, so the next twenty minutes, I'll get up, fold these blankets. Um, and go check on the stuff in the dryer. To go check on them, see how dry they are and then probably turn it all the way back again and start it over, honestly. Just to make sure that it gets dry, dry and kinda dry. Our dryer sucks ass. Inappropriate to say, but however it does, it's a horrible dryer. It's absolutely horrid. Um, so it takes forever to dry stuff. So, it usually takes two cycles for large items or like one and a half cycles to get something dry. Even when you clean the lint trap, it still takes forever to get something actually dry. Uh, so. And we try so hard to combat the fact that we just need to put in a maintenance request. However, they've recently annoyed the crap out of me because we've had ants in kitchens and I've put in now three maintenance requests to get someone to do something about the flippin' ants. It's, the ants are still there. I cleaned up the kitchen this morning. I like went in there, like wiped down all the counters. Needs to be swept and mopped, but I don't like the sweep or mop shit. So, it may take a second for me to do that. Maybe I'll do it next weekend. But yeah. Okay, I've turned in my quiz. I have, I have, I'm kinda yelling, I feel like. But I've turned in my quiz. Figure out what I'm gonna do for my behavior plan, part two. So, I'm gonna start on that so I can get that done by three-fifty and then, no, four o'clock. Yeah, it'll be at four o'clock that I get finished with that. Then another twenty-minute break. I'm gonna go check the dryer and fold these blankets and keep drinking my water. It's gonna make a tea, but worries me drop. Yeah, it's okay. I need a new one. Okay, it is four o'clock. My alarm should go off in a second. Um, two things completely done. I finished both my behavior plan, so when she opens it up, I can just turn it in. And then, because this time it's not currently open. She doesn't open it until after class tomorrow. So, I'll just turn it in tomorrow when I get home or tomorrow during like my study time at work. And then, what else? There we go. And twenty minutes begins? No. Okay, I turned that in, turned in the quiz. I missed two spots on the quiz and then the rest of it, she has to grade by hand because they're like essay questions, but the like multiple, oh, I didn't pick a cap up my teeth. Ow. The other questions for multiple choice and I did miss two parts in the matching. I just got two things switched because it's the same thing, it's just a difference in like wording. And so, I always miss those. I miss those in my other class too. Also, I remember what the classes are. It's applied um, behavior analysis and um, what, what, what is the classroom class again? Give me a second. Applied behavior analysis and the other one is principles of behavior analysis. Uh, but on both of those quizzes, I missed the same two questions. So, I, that means I need to study both of those concepts over again uh, just because I switched them in both my classes. And like I said, my two, my fourth class that I take, there are two classes, two linguistics classes and two psychology classes that I take as a double major. And I, they're just reiterating the same thing over and again, which I appreciate. I like when my classes do that where it's literally just the same thing. However, it's reiterating different sections of the same concept. And so, I'm missing the same questions on that second concept um, in my behavior analysis class. Now, I think I'm gonna go switch back to my language project, my Cherokee language project after this break and then maybe we'll do another thing of homework or we may do like more admin shit because admin shit means like school stuff and um, what's it called? The video for this week. I made the video because that means I can put my sheets on my bed afterwards because the video after I finish editing it can work on getting downloaded and I have to leave my tablet where it is unbothered for the entire time that it's downloading. So, I'll probably just put my alarm, my fifty-minute alarm on my phone instead of on my tablet that time and then be able to go through, put my sheets on my bed and keep it pushing. So, I'm gonna go check on the sheets now and then re-put them in the dryer if I need to. Um, my water's almost gone. Um, and I'm getting hungry again. So, this time I need like a real food. So, I may just re-eat some more soup right now because I'm still hungry. It's four oh-three. I have to get back to working at four-twenty and we'll do another fifty-minute interval at four-twenty and we'll do my language project. And then after that fifty-minute interval, it'll be like five something and I'll put, and I'll do the rest of the editing of the video and put my sheets on my bed so we can knock both those out. So, I can then write the description, add all the links, timestamp, and then shoot or send her off. So, that should work. Let's get her done. Okay, sites changing plans. We're going to actually switch that around. We're going to do, we're gonna finish editing the video first because my sheets are almost dry, which means I'll finish editing it, download that video and put my sheets on my bed. And then uh, work on like all the regular stuff for that video. I reheated my, I reheated the rest of the soup because it's like two servings in like the progressive like tomato soup can. So, I just added a little bit of cheese to this one. And I'm gonna, I don't feel like making another bagel. So, I have two forms of crackers that I wanna try. I have pretzels and then I have my favorite crackers of all time, honestly, right now, which are the Which are the simple mills, like rosemary, sea salt almond. These, cause they're like almond flour crackers that I really, really like. I eat these with everything now. They're also a little bit better for you than regular crackers. They're so good. Yeah, I'm gonna eat this. Then we'll get back to editing the video. We'll go ahead and upload it. I wish it'd be good to go. See you, bye. Okay, I had started the timer. It's only forty nine minutes because I lost a minute of time. So I tried to just keep it on track. I'm not necessarily locked in for the exact time, but I like to end on an exact time, end and begin on an exact time. I'm finishing up the rest of my soup now, cranking my waters. I've got my tablet with my open project. Ready to go. I think it needs a little bit more time cutting down. I still need to check to make sure everything has been pulled that needs, need not be in there and figure out what graphics I wanna do. Um, and then I need to get to making the description thumbnail and downloading and uploading it. I'm gonna download it first, most likely. Okay, I'm gonna figure out graphics next and go ahead and pick out the music and then I'm almost finished with my soup. Also, it's really dark in here at a nice four twenty because it's raining. It's been raining all day. I chose the perfect day to do this, cause it's very cozy. I have most of my lights off, honestly. If I turned off my desk light, this is where we are in lighting. My little wax melt. And my window is open, by the way. My blinds, my blinds are open. And now my soup is done. Okay. It's time to get to editing. Hello, as you can see behind me, oh, I have not marked them off. I'll go mark them off right now. Um, I did go ahead and start the next fifty minute timer, cause we're about to go to switch back to my language project. Documents. Um, is that, hmm. Um. Hmm. Language project, cause I think I've been using the book. I was using the book. Okay, let me check my other language project. My first one. How did I do that? How did you do that? Cause it just, it actually turns me as just sees. Cause, okay, I gotta go through that. I was, that's what stopped me when I was working on it earlier, is that sometimes in these books, the person, Durbin Feeling, who is the writer of all of the things that I'm using for this project, his name is Durbin Feeling, rest in peace, my dude. However, you motherfucker, uh, he doesn't necessarily do well in translating words when it comes to using them very well in the phonological text when it comes to linguistics, which means that I see agow tihah. Agow tihah, Cherokee for sees. However, he translates it to he sees it, which doesn't mean that, that means that it's just a, its own word, which means it's the word sees is in reference to someone seeing something. However, see is not available to, cause it's just the word sees. Take it as sees. I see something, I, she's sees, 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 not even see, but the action of seeing. Okay, it's the action of currently seeing. That's what that is. However, that's just all the word translates to and s- which is what I checked for several different translations. I checked online and in this book and in the other book that I have, it's not by Durbin Feeling. Um, however, there is no other option to the word sees, so it's just going to be sees as he sees it and it's just the word sees. I'm gonna put in parentheses, only translation I could find, or is he sees it, it's not the actual act of just sees and there's no like split in the word where the word sees is the word sees. Um, agow tihah is just sees. Keep in mind, I am not saying that correctly. At all. Random Cherokee, I'm not saying that at all, correctly at all, cause I'm not paying attention to the actual IPA symbol. I'm just saying agow tihah is what's written as A G, A G O W H T, voiceless I, H and then A. Okay, I wanna go, cause as you can see, bed is made, uh, clothes have been put away. I'm going to go cut right, scratch those out on the board. Um, and then we're gonna get straight to this language project, cause I'm just gonna just push it. Cause we're gonna start off with negation, cause negation is the easiest thing that I have access to and then tense and aspect markers is next and then we'll keep searching for subject verb agreement and then I'll put in all of my references, um, a little chart and then turn that in. And then the next thing I need to get done in the next few weeks, if I do this again, we'll probably work on my presentation for this particular section, cause I do have to do a presentation. I think November eleventh or November ninth, can't remember exactly. It's on my calendar, just have it. It's not on that calendar, it's on my other calendar, cause it's November. Uh, my whiteboard calendar is not up to date with November yet because it's still what? October. Okay, went across this off the board and then get back into it. Okay, it's six twenty. I am taking my next twenty minute break. I've gotten pretty far in the project. I'm almost finished with the negation section and then I'll move straight, be able to move straight into the subject verb explanation, just because it's gonna be pretty short and then of course past tense needs its own chart and so then I'll just provide a chart for it and a few morphemes for it. I will have to look it up online and I'll probably find another Durbin Feeling section. It's probably in the book, but I'm too lazy to look for it. So I'll look on Monday, but after I finish the negation section, negation section's gonna be the longest. Uh, we'll do past tense, so I'm just gonna provide just the table and then a few options. I don't want to do examples for every single one, just because it's gonna take me three hours to do. But we're actually pretty good on timing and subject, so. There's that. After this, I'm actually gonna switch gears, after I've actually been working, I'm gonna switch gears to, uh, working on my human language homework for this week. Uh, just because it'll be a little bit more fun. So. I just have to do the homework and then I can do the listening, kind of like, like perception exercise, which is like just a listening quiz almost. I should drink some more water. Yeah, drink some more water and then after that, which will be probably about, cause this will be about like seven something, cause the next time this alarm goes off, it'll be six forty. Then it'll be seven thirty for the next thing and then we'll start again at eight thirty, go till nine. We're actually just gonna keep going. I'm gonna take an hour for dinner to make dinner, uh, and maybe also prep my lunch for later. At like seven thirty, get back to it at, get back to it at eight thirty. Yeah. Stop at seven thirty, get back to it at eight thirty and pick up where I left off on my human language, on my language project and then turn that, get that done in the next, hopefully get that done in the next few hours. Uh, so. Yeah, we're good to go. Let's take this break. I've done so much in this book. We've got a bunch of stuff done, actually. My FAFSA and GATOR stuff will not get done today. I have more pressing matters. Oh, it may get done. We don't know. I wanna go up until ten, eleven o'clock, honestly, because I wanna make sure I get this language project done and I'm pretty far and it, it doesn't take long and honestly, I'm less stressed about it than I was last time, cause I know what I'm doing. Um, and I know not to trust this man. And so I figure it out myself. And so I can honestly reuse morphemes and then I'll just copy and paste my reference from my other paper, cause that's the other reference I have and then of course I'll reference the other paper that I'm looking at for the tense section. And then I'll turn it in, because I'll just be able to use my, um, my little morpheme thing. What's it called? Stupid thing. That thing with the thing we're hooking out, just maybe copy paste it from my other paper. Turn that all in and we should be good to go. Yeah, but yeah. After this, we're gonna work on some other homework and if I get that finished, done, if I get that done before the timer is up, then I'll just pick back up where I left off on HL on my language project and then keep it pushing. So yeah. Alright, let's take this break. Hello, it is currently nine twenty. Like I said, I wanna be done. I don't think I told you this. I think I thought this to myself. I think I wanna be done before eleven o'clock so I can shower and hit the bed, because I do have to go to class tomorrow. I'm currently drinking some kombucha. I had my, I was filming earlier. But I took a pause in filming because my friend was in here. She actually ordered us pizza, um, which is what you saw earlier. She just ordered us a thing of pizza, cause she was already gonna order and she was home, so we just did a few homework pieces together. She worked on something while I was still working on my Cherokee project. I'm almost finished with it. Allow me to show you how far I've gotten. Actually, let's pull this to the side. I wanna see a page breakdown, cause my last one was seven pages long. Okay, that's not that bad this time. I think we're only at three. One, two, three. Nice. We're only at three pages right now mainly because I also haven't added in the examples for past tense marking, which there are seven forms of like tense marking in Cherokee, which I think that I still feel like I should go, you know, fight the man who wrote all of these, cause it's the same person that's written all of this, by the way, if you were wondering. His name is Durbin Feeling and I have a feeling that I still wanna fight this man. Nineteen fifty seven, that's what it was. He was old. Anyways, um, I still have to spend a while doing like a, let me write this down before I forget it. And I'll be confused later when I go to finish doing my citations and I'm like, what the crap? Nineteen fifty seven, that's what it was. That one was written nineteen fifty seven. That was written in two thousand and three and this one was written in twenty twenty four. Yes, I'm only using Durbin Feeling references because that's the only option I have. And yes, I am on my twenty minute break and I'm still working on this. Because I have questions for him. I need to get like a, what's it called? One of them tables. One of them. What's the thing it's called? Ouija boards, to be able to speak with this man, cause I have so many questions for why he did this to us. So I'm gonna bang out the conclusion after I get finished taking my break, because I've promised I've been going for a while. Cause I ended, I got started on it again at eight thirty, like I started working on like, I got far in like working on my sounds of human language work. Swirl the kombucha. And I'm not doing too bad on my sounds of the human language. Actually, I was confused for a moment there, because I would go check my canvas for some information that I needed for this project. I was like, I need to see something. I need to check, um, like the, the syllabus that they hand out to us for that and it was on here and I was like, wait, my grade and what's it called? Went up, and it did. I had a hundred on my homework, which is crazy. Uh, the homeworks count for a lot. The quizzes count for a good amount, but the homeworks count for way more. And I have started on the homework, however, I need to finish working on it. I'm gonna shower and wash my face, um, after this next spot, cause I'm probably gonna be able to turn it in pretty soon and I'll have this shower and head to bed and that'll be it. So I'm gonna continue my little break on my tablet. Also, I'm listening to Stephanie Zirina and this story is well, just like three quarter. It's nothing bad. It's from her like comedy section, which is like moral of the story. That shit's good right now. Okay, it is currently ten forty five. I went fifteen minutes over. It's supposed to, I was supposed to be done at ten thirty. That's when my alarm went off. However, I had to spend the last fifteen minutes putting in all my references and stuff like that. I'm about to upload my paper and send her off. Come on. What just happened? Come here. Cause I'm about to crash out, cause I just put it in and it didn't fix itself. Did it just eat? Oh. Okay, there we go. It's, yeah, it was submitted. It just ate my paper for a second. Hmm, that was a laugh of pain and sadness, but no, uh, for a second there, my That was a laugh of pain and sadness, but no, uh for a second there, my thing ate my paper. That was fun. Uh I think it turned out to be only five pages this time, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, this time it was only five pages, because I didn't um provide as much information, speaking of, I'm about to type as a note to one of my teachers, is the fact that there are, oh, there's a lot in trying to explain tense markers. Okay, yeah, I, there's, there's a large section for tense markers in Cherokee, cuz there's nine ways to reference tense in Cherokee, and it is relative to if you're giving it as command, if it happened moment, like a moment ago, or a little bit longer than a moment ago, or if it's happening like tomorrow, or a few days after tomorrow, or is it a command that I'm giving you to do something tomorrow? And it also like, oh, here's in reference to it being at some time, but at a particular time. The same way that I skipped over a particular morpheme for negation, cuz it's the imperative form, which is telling someone to do something as a command, but to negate that command, but as a negation to a command, not to negate that command, but as a negation to that man, like, let's not hit him. Like, let's do this as like like it's, let's do it as a, as a command, however, ignore my command, type thing. Let's hit him versus let's not hit him. Like, like, let's, yeah, that, that, so much fun. So. We've gotten a good amount done today. Be proud of us. Language project, done. Psych, paper and behavior plan both got done. Uh I edited most of the video, done, I made my bed, done, folded clothes, done, had dinner, done, no, I didn't do the day. Packed my lunch for tomorrow, but that is a morning thing, which my alarm is already on, I'm gonna go shower, hit the bed, and knock it out. So, I hope you guys enjoyed studying with me on this nice cozy rainy day, cuz it's exactly this, it was a very nice cozy rainy day. And I am tired, and I'm gonna go to bed, also, this is a little touch land, like hands anti-bottles bought, smells so nice, lavender, so. If you enjoyed my all day study session, let me know, we can do this again. I honestly have so much to do this week. But not as much as I did now that I've finished all of my work. So, honestly, I'm about to chill this week, cuz I'm gonna probably finish the rest of my linguistics homework between today and tom- well, tomorrow and Tuesday? Tomorrow and Tuesday, because tomorrow I can use my lunch break, uh my time between lunch and work to work on it, and then Tuesday after my drill session, I can use that time to do my work too. And finally, I can just do a bunch of work. Tuesday, I just do a bunch of work between that time. Sorry, I needed to fix the way I had like my like wax melter, I moved it from over there to over here, like right next to me, cuz I wanted it closer. That's already started cooling. Now that I've taken it off the heater, she's gonna quickly cool, and I I'm gonna go hop in the shower and head to B E's of D's again. Thank you guys so much for watching, hope you enjoyed hanging out with me, if you did, like I said, leave some love down below, and I, we'll see you guys next time. Bye.